This time I'd like to call the meeting. Roll call please.
Brian Geezy.
Present.
Doug Houston.
Present. Brian O'Hara.
Present.
Brian, present.
Corey Bludzowski.
Present.
Take the votes are able, let's stand and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Today we have virtue card reading.
Can we grab one?
We can grab one.
Miranda?
Miranda. Oh, I got two.
Integrity.
You get to pick.
Integrity. Integrity. Integrity is living by your highest values. It is being honest and sincere. Integrity helps you listen to your conscience, to do the right thing, and to tell the truth. You act with integrity when your words and actions match. Integrity gives you self-respect and a peaceful heart. You're practicing integrity when you think about what virtues matter to you. Stand up for what you believe in. Do the right thing even when it is hard. Willingly clean up your mistakes. Think for yourself and avoid temptation. Affirmation, I have integrity. I stand up for what is right. I mean what I say and say what I mean. I am my own leader.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to go over the Board of Education guidelines. I would like to note that as a board, we're going to be reviewing these guidelines. We have some new board members that we need to make sure they have a voice in this. We also want to bring it into alliance with policy governance and our strategic plan. But with an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views, even when views are not in line with all members, being respectful of time. We will work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We will work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results in high achievement. We will work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, the arts, and athletics. Thank you. At this time, I'd welcome any public comments. I'd like to make one introduction again a little bit. We have a star here tonight, and I'm very pleased that this star is here. We don't do this enough, but we want to recognize a member of the Safeway team as one of, you know, Safeway, for those of you who don't know, is our busing company. And these people touch our students. They're the first person our students see every day. They're the person that say goodbye to the students at the end of the day. And, you know, we don't, we don't always give, well, we don't always give them the credit they deserve for what they do for our district and what they do for our children. So I'm very privileged this evening to welcome Nancy Ziggy.
Yep, I got that right.
Kind of like saying Geezy. You know, this is something I've been really looking forward to, is having you here tonight. I want to, I want to say a few words. I might ask you for something. Nancy is a veteran driver who came to Nacusa and took on a challenging route for Safeway. She has gotten to know the kids very well as well as their parents. She has a great rapport with the students and knows she can contact parents with any concerns that occur. Nancy is an aide on Bob Smith's 4K route. She is wonderful with the little ones on the route, keeping them involved with songs and games to make the ride home fun. She always asks each rider about their date before it is their turn to get off the bus and gives them a sticker if they were well behaved on the bus. The parents know what the stickers mean, and they are always happy to see that they get off the bus with the sticker on their hand. She occasionally brings the magic bag with her that has a little toy or prize for the kids if they are good on the bus. She loves telling them the story about how the magic bag just appears on her table at home when the kids are good on the bus. She always remembers them on holidays that happened through the school year. Two years ago, she made a special end of the year gift for the 4K class after an especially good year. She made them all handcrafted tie-dye T-shirts, which they all wore on the last day of school. She also made them the tie-dye T-shirts that all the Nacusa drivers wore on the first day of school. Nancy has been doing the popcorn machine safety training with the new 4K classes for several years now, and Mrs. Acker always, always requests her to be there. She always seems to know when kids don't feel well or are having a bad day. She talks with them and provides the extra attention that helps make it better. Safeway considers Nancy to be a great asset to their company. And we consider you to be a good asset to our district.
Thank you.
So at this time, I would like to formally present Nancy Ziggy with the Outstanding Bus Driver Award. You are sincerely appreciated. You know, these words say so much about what you do for the kids. And that, that means, that means so much. Brian, if you might, delivering that to her. Man. I see that you're sporting some tie-dye shirts. These are probably.
This is what my kids got the last day. I also had one because we took a group picture. But this is what the little kids had because we talked about the rainbow. So we did every color of the rainbow in it.
These are the ones she made for the drivers for the back of school.
Is that cool? That's very cool.
When we have a tie-dye day, we'll invite you all tomorrow.
We can make our own. That would be fun.
Nancy will be our heater.
Nancy, check out the website because you might be out there.
This is your moment of fame, but fame is every day, and I'm sure those kids that you worked with remember you. I remember my bus driver from 4K kindergarten to this day. And I was probably the first kid on a Nacusa school bus that got a seatbelt because I would never sit down. I wouldn't have gotten many stickers that first year. But you put up with, you know, the weather, all those conditions out there every day, and you bring those kids to school safe and happy, and you let them home safe and happy. One more round of applause.
Thank you, Brian.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here. Thanks for shuttling her in. Being her chauffeur.
I need a driver every so often.
Thank you, guys. CDOSA, we don't have anybody from CDOSA. I also would like to make a quick introduction. If anybody's wondering who this young lady is at the end of the table, if you just want to introduce yourself.
My name is Jasmine Gonzalez. I'm a senior, and I'm vice president of student council. And I'm here to represent Marissa, which kind of make it tonight. And the link leader.
And the national office.
And the national office.
She's, she's, she's agreed to come with Marissa's obligations with regards to sports. And, you know, and again, if you have obligations, you know, something to school outrule this, this time here. But we certainly, that student voice and having you here and see what goes on here means a whole lot to us. At this point, overarching results. We need to approve PI twenty-six academic and career planning services. Terry, any comments?
Yes, Mr. Johnson's here to speak to this topic, right? Jen Jackson has been working closely with it, but she could beat her with us tonight.
Yep, she has golf tonight, girls' golf is playing tonight as well. So this is the, PI twenty-six is the state, or the public statute regarding academic and career plans. In the document, when you open it up, you can see the activities, the senior activities, the junior activities, more freshman activities. I mean, I guess it's, you know, it's pretty encompassing, the document and what it goes over. We really have, at the high school, used the academic and career plans that we've talked about in the past to structure much of what we're doing. And really, we've created a system that is quite unique in, you know, certainly in the region, if not in the state. Jen, I don't, I think we, well, we've talked about it before, but Jen will in October be going to a national conference to present on our, our, our approach to academic and career plans. Because certainly, one part that's very unique is it runs through, all of the teachers have advisory groups, and that's where the bulk of what we do for academic and career plans comes through advisory. And then Jen also works with Corey Anfenson at the middle school to address the six, eight components of, of the state statute. And you can see, you know, much of this is, you know, stuff that comes through from statute, but at the same time, it's really, really good for, for students. And so, I guess, are there any questions about the ACP or?
These years go by often quickly, but we were privileged by visiting Mr. Tony Evers. Was it last year or the year before?
That was three years ago now. Three, yeah, three years ago now.
They go by fast, but that was in, was partly around this.
Well, that was around CTE, the Career Technology.
But this, this was something that plays very heavily.
This ties, yeah, well, yes, in our, in our district it does.
Yes.
Because it, it really was the CTE department that really took on ACP. And so here it has, you know, and certainly parts of PI twenty-six everywhere are, are CTE driven. But that's part of what makes Nacusa's system unique is that it is, you know, very much within CTE. The exciting part then is that CTE really has an impact on all students in our, in our school. So, so yes, that's one of the uniqueness.
And I think, you know, Jen's to be just congratulated on her, on her passion and work in this as well as your contributors.
Jen and all, all of those teachers at the school, because it really comes down to everybody working really hard on this, which is a really exciting thing because you go into a lot of schools and ask a teacher about ACP, and they have no clue. You come to the high school and ask a teacher about ACP, and they know, and they can, you know, tell you exactly what it is and what they're doing with their students.
Look at Jen. We're doing more work with kind of getting. We're getting that more into the middle school activities, and that's, that's very important, you know. I think, you know, that there's always a discussion of, you know, challenging those students or, you know, those students that have the opportunities to move ahead of, you know, maybe they're, you know, maybe they're more progressed in math or otherwise, it provides pathways for them to go above and beyond. And we need to challenge not only the students, but the parents to really, you know, for those students that can do it, to do it.
Once of that plays into the weighted GPA that we've.
Well, even, even before that, because, you know, I think at the first football game this year, when they started announcing some of the statistics about, you know, about the number of midstate courses, dual credit courses, and the number of dollars that were saved by students, these are numbers that really impact, and I had a couple of people comment on that. And, you know, I think those, I really appreciate whoever got those comments and that information to those individuals to read that information, but it wasn't noticed by those individuals. With that in mind, any questions, discussion? I'd like.
I had one question for Jasmine.
Go for it.
So Jasmine, would you tell us a little bit about your academic career planning?
Okay, well, I think, when did they start, like officially, it was, it had to be required for graduation? I think it was when I was in high school.
It was.
It was. Okay, so maybe like sophomore year. Well, we didn't know anything about it until last year, and I know my advisor didn't really push on it that much. But now that, like, this year, we're actually, like, we needed to graduate, like, everybody's pushing us to it. So I'm not gonna lie, I didn't really do anything last year for it, but, I don't know, I know, like, with all the help from the staff and from Ms. Jackson especially, I am getting some of that stuff finished. And I don't have my career and financial. Yeah, literacy class yet. I took that second semester. But I know with that, I'm gonna be able to finish everything because I want to get as much done now so that I don't have to do as much with that class, so.
And last year, that's a part of the career and financial literacy is a, so all the work that they're doing in advisory, building up with their ACPs culminates in career and financial literacy. And last year was our first group of seniors who, that was a required course for graduation. And a huge part of that is the portfolio that comes out in there. And so, so that also provided a bit of a, I don't know, wake up is right. But a certain amount of, oh, that's what we're doing this for when they get to that portfolio that Jasmine was talking about.
Because even if I haven't used it yet, I know that it will help me for, like, future jobs and everything. I do have everything in my portfolio that I can pull out and just, you know, kind of include that into the things that I do have already.
Awesome. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Any other questions or discussion? At this time, I'd like to call for a motion to approve PI twenty-six academic and career planning services as presented to the board. We have a first and second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Mr. Brian Grill, any, anything that you'd like to discuss this month?
Just wanted to give you an update. So we applied for the second round of the safety grant. So the application is submitted. I actually just got, we're back today. So we just have a few minor adjustments to make, but then once we resubmit the grant, it should be looking good. But just to let you know, it looks like we should be good to go as soon as those changes are made for round two. So round one, right now, the changes that are being worked on, I'm working with Steve Hersberg to get the shatterproof film on all the entryway doors. So he's in collaboration with the vendor to make sure that happens. Sonata is working with Heartland to get the cameras that were approved through the first round. But we also have some camera additional things with round two. So he's waiting to see how long that'll take so if we can do everything at once, like over winter break or something like that, to not cause interruption during the day. Sonata's hoping to do that then with the security cameras. So, but those things are going well, and then as part of the safety grant as well, Steve Hersberg, Josh Colow, and I are heading to, we legally have to start doing a safety assessment of our schools once a year, starting this school year. So we are going to the training of the assessment they're recommending schools do as part of that on Monday. So, so a lot of things in the school safety realm just moving right now.
Brian, is that assessment, is that something you have to turn in to the state then, or what?
So that will be presented to you in December because at, in December of this year, because by January one, I have to have our emergency action plan submitted to the Department of Justice School Division along with the safety assessment and our form that documents how we do when we run through an emergency action plan. So I'm working on all those parts right now.
So this assessment thing is separate from the grant application?
Well, part of round one with the grant, we could apply because the training for it is $250. So we were able to pay for the training using the grant money. So.
Quick question, and I might be, and I don't know where I am on this. The safety committee, in, in regards to the application for this grant, you know, there was a small group of individuals had to work very closely and quickly together to get that grant together. And again, with the second part of the grant, is there a larger part of a safety committee that encompasses possibly parents or other people that, that's out there that will be involved at some point? I don't know.
That's actually a requirement of round two. So I'm gonna be sending information once we get the okay for this grant. And that's where I know I sent out a letter last spring, right before school ended, asking for parent input. But that's where I held off for a little bit because of the safety grant. So once we got approved, we have to get this committee in place. But with all these moving parts right now, I didn't want to come and say, hey, let's start working on this. Oh, wait, we're gonna start working on this. I wanted to know what was approved through the grant, and then we're creating the parent committee. But that is a requirement of round two, so a committee will be formed. The requirement for the committee, though, as of right now, is 10% of our teaching staff. So it doesn't require parents as of yet, but how that looks, we can guide the course a little bit. So if we wanted to work parents and things like that into it, we can do that.
There's just some questions I have, and that was a very good answer, so thank you. Thank you, Brian. Ms. Lynn Knight.
I will defer to the other boardroom.
Very good. And at this point, Jasmine, it's your time. You're new to this. We are, we are not scary people, even with that. So, you know, I don't know if Marissa or Keith, Mr. Johnson went over. You know, you could bring us information from the student council, things you're doing. You can take back what you're hearing today to the student council. I don't really want to put you on the spot too much today. You're gonna boost yourself. That was enough. And your portfolio, Mr. Whitmark.
So right now, I think we've only had one other meeting for student council, and all we're doing is just preparing for homecoming. So we're doing spirit days, activities, what we're doing for the pep rally and everything. We're planning on having just a school pep rally, maybe the Friday of, like, of homecoming week, just for school. And, I don't know, everything's just running smoothly for now.
Homecoming is October.
October sixth and seventh, I think.
Fifth is the game, sixth is the dance, yeah.
Okay. And is there, what else goes on during that time? Is there a poker pop football game or something?
Yes, I think it's the Sunday before.
Okay.
The weekend. It's Sunday before the week of. So juniors are practicing and seniors are practicing. And then we're probably, if, we have to talk to, like, both the grades and, like, just settle everything down because I know last year we couldn't do a power buff because it was just too hectic, and we just ended up canceling it. So we're gonna try to do that, but if we do, we have to settle, like, do it now, decide now. So we're gonna have to talk to them really soon about it, and we met today during lunch too. So some of those things got settled down. And then, um.
The parade.
Thursday will be the parade, yep.
Thursday is the parade.
The roast beef, just to make this announcement so everyone is aware, the roast beef will not be on the day of the parade. So the roast beef will be occurring as a tailgate before the game at, you know, in the parking lot here by home. So. But, yeah, you know, kind of.
Kind of by the sidewalk out there in the grass.
The other part too. So at the parade, though, there will be slices of pizza available for purchase. So that is a change, so that everyone is aware. The roast beef competition and the roast beef sandwiches will not be available before and during the parade as it has been in the past.
Kind of a change in tradition, but, you know, they're, they're doing something different and.
Yeah, and I think it'll be exciting to have, I mean, that tailgate field should be, you know, a fun, you know, fun addition to the.
Yeah.
To the homecoming activities.
So do you want to highlight that change? The pep rally is happening during the school day and not after the parade, is that right?
Oh, no, we're doing one after the parade as well, but just one for the students.
Got it. So the traditional pep rally after the parade?
Traditional pep rally will still be there. Yep, it'll be at the gym following the parade.
Very good. Very good. Thank you very much.
And again, student emceed. That one will be emceed by students, which has worked very well the last couple of years.
Have you chosen the emcee yet?
Yep. I think it's Milo, brunette, and Christian Housler.
Thank you. Good information. Thank you very much. And at this time, I believe I'd like to turn a floor over to Ms. Lynn Knight.
Okay. So every year at around this time, we have to come to the board and ask for short-term borrowing. Once again, we are working with PMA. This will be, I believe, the third year working with PMA. Whereas we have a handful of school districts getting together, and instead of doing each of us a borrowing, we actually pool our, our requests together to get a better interest rate because borrowing a large amount of money versus, you know, separate, small separate ones will give us a better play in the market. So this year, unfortunately, I had to increase our short-term borrowing by $400,000 due to the deficit from last year and due to the projected deficit again this year. So last year, we borrowed 1.6 million. Tonight, I am asking the board to approve a resolution to a borrowing of $2 million, not to exceed $2 million. And again, this is because of the funding and where we are in the funding formula. I believe at the last workshop, when we talked about the deficit from seventeen eighteen, we talked about how the state promised us two-thirds funding, but in fact, we are the exact opposite, where the state only funds us maybe one-third, and the taxpayers are funding us by two-thirds. Our tax payments are, I believe there are four payments, four to five payments a year versus the state aid where it's more evenly sent out throughout the year. So during the months of October, well, starting September, October, November, and half of December is when we utilize most of the short-term borrowing because we have all this money going out and we have nothing coming in. So typically, when our tax payments come in on January and February and April, it kind of pays back at the short-term borrowing, and then we just let it sit at, you know, in a bank account and earn, you know, the few pennies of interest that we get for it. So every year, we do, we do, we do the short-term borrowing. Tonight, this resolution is basically authorizing, pre-authorizing me to borrow and delegate the authority to the business manager so I can sign off on the note on October ninth, which is the projected sale date. So my agenda, or my approval, or my, my recommendation is to approve the resolution authorizing temporary borrowing in an amount not to exceed $2 million, issuance of tax revenue anticipation promissory note, and the participation in the PMA levy on eight participation, eight anticipation notes program.
Great. I'd like to call for a motion as presented by Ms. Lynn Knight.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please. Doug Houston.
Yes.
Brian O'Hara.
Yes.
Doug Houston. Corey Bludzowski.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lynn, with the, with the 2 million versus the 1.6, so we're paying more interest, obviously.
Yes.
So than that, it's just showing in our budget as a point, or do we know how much more that costs us?
We won't know until October ninth, when the sale date occurs, and then we actually know the interest rate. So I can certainly update, update you in October, whereas I will know how much we paid in seventeen eighteen versus how much we are going to pay in eighteen nineteen. Okay.
Good question, Brian. Thank you. And again, it just, you know, that the more money that we have to borrow this year is a, is a direct reflection of the fact that our revenues are not matching what our costs are. And again, the funding, the funding of those revenues is based upon less from the state aid, but more from our taxpayers, and the payment dates of those, of those revenues do not coincide with our needs for those monies. We have to pay our teachers. If we do not pay our teachers, they don't wanna come to work. Okay, we're gonna move into policy governance. The first one that we're gonna talk about today is OE five, learning environment treatment of students. We last looked at this, uh, in, was it September of seventeen or, yeah, September of two thousand seventeen? This is a, this is a far-reaching document, um, probably one of the more laborious and more, not more, it's more very important strategic operational expectations that we have. Um, the learning environment that we, that we have for our students. Um, we met last week Thursday and we had a extensive discussion. Um, prior to that, um, I wanna congratulate our, our administrative team and those individuals that Terry and Lynn and everybody that put the work into preparing the artifacts and, and the information that was presented here in OE five. One thing that I wanna, I wanna note, and this is actually noted, I've already kinda uh, put a little statement, Terry, did you have enough time to read the comments I put in this at the very end today?
Are they in, are they in here? No, I didn't.
No, I didn't.
That you put in today?
Yeah.
No, I don't.
Okay. Um, let me pull it up. I apologize for that, Terry.
Why don't I read the policy statement?
Yeah, go ahead.
So the policy statement for this policy is annually, the board shall assure that the district administrator has established and is maintaining a learning environment that is safe, respectful, and conducive to effective learning. So the first item that, uh, the admin team, uh, addressed was, uh, maintain a climate that is characterized by support and encouragement for high student achievement. Did you wanna?
I just wanna, before we really get rocking on this, I just wanna say that it should be noted that some of the weaknesses, the language that I use, and I appreciate any feedback. Can change it. It should be noted that some of the weaknesses identified in two thousand seventeen are systemic and somewhat instructional in nature. And that monitoring these and tracking the appropriate measurables will be done on a year-to-year basis. If previous concerns for such weaknesses do not show improvement, there may in the future be cause for findings of exceptions. But I don't think that, you know, continually identifying it as a weakness, you know, again, these are, these are works in progress. And, and I, I wanna note that as, as we, as we move forward. But as we review the measurables, of which there are many, if we notice a downward trend, there indeed may be an exception noted at some point. But for us to continually identify, you know, weakness, exception, or weakness, exception, that's not fair to the system and it's not fair to, to administrators and the people that work on it. So with that being said, uh, do we wanna, you know, do we wanna look at the weaknesses and then the improvements, or, you know, did we address the issues last year that we had, you know? How do you wanna address that?
Well, one, one was, uh, we had talked about student engagement and we had used the Gallup poll for that. And, uh, we did, as an admin team, uh, decide that we wanna make sure all students are involved and uh, take the, the assessment, uh, and assessments coming up in October. But we did for those students that about fifty percent of the kids did take the Gallup, uh, survey. And we did see an increment, so in student engagement, and student engagement is, uh, defined as the involvement and enthusiasm for school. So we went from forty percent of that fifty percent of students that took the survey, from forty percent to forty-seven, they are, they're engaged. And we, we had twenty-seven percent of students not engaged, and now we have twenty-nine percent of students not engaged. And then we had thirty-two percent of students actively disengaged, you know, and now we've moved that to twenty-four percent. So twenty-four percent of our students are actively disengaged. So of course, all the work that we're doing to, to make learning fun and engaging and exciting is slowly going to move the needle around engagement. The other topic that, uh, is, is, um, studied is hope. And hope is the ideas and energy students have for the future. So we had forty-two percent of our students being hopeful in sixteen seventeen, and we moved the needle on that to forty-six percent of students being hopeful. Uh, in sixteen seventeen, we had thirty-seven percent of our students that were stuck. And this year, or last year, seventeen eighteen, we had thirty percent of our students stuck. And, uh, under, under discouraged, we had twenty percent of our students discouraged in sixteen seventeen, uh, as defined by the survey, and this last year, we had, uh, twenty-four percent of our students discouraged. So student engagement and hope, so monitoring that, that's promising. A, a couple other areas that we've, uh, looked at since last year is uh, having too many initiatives going on in the district that, that's been identified. Uh, and the board had asked that we really look at addressing the most important first and putting a timeline to the others. So we've worked hard at that and providing more, uh, leadership at the building level to, uh, define, uh, initiatives. Another area that we talked about was guest teacher training. Um, we have, uh, since last year, I'm happy to say we've had probably three different, uh, opportunities for our guest teachers to be more involved in learning about, uh, the happenings of the district and the professional development that our teachers are doing. Um, we've had, uh, parent concerns about the consistency of understanding discipline policies. We've got all of the discipline policies out on the web and each building is working, um, you know, with their, their teaching staff and support staff to really monitor that and, and do better around, uh, being consistent with discipline policies. Another area was, um, responsive classroom training and philosophy at Nikusa High School. Uh, one of the things that, that we had covered is, uh, the responsive classroom does not have a, uh, strategy or a component for the high school. But the high school is working hard at, uh, continue to grow as a culture and really basing their practices on restorative practices. And they've got a team set, uh, uh, really studying what it means to be a trauma-sensitive school. Um, and then we also talked further about discipline in the past. And we didn't necessarily have, um, discipline plans, behavior management plans, that were consistent across the, the three buildings. So we've tightened that up a bit, and again, that can be seen on the webpage. Um, we talked about standards-based grading, and that's one of those areas where we continue to have standards-based grading at the elementary school, Humke. And we do have a couple other areas in the district that are looking at standards-based grading, but it's, it's not a, a priority across the district at this time. And, uh, we talked about at-risk students and having a critical care list. Um, and what we've done is we've, we've had critical care lists and we continue to work at each of the buildings to really wrap as many services as we can around those students that are coming to us that really have, you know, more than just the academic needs. Um, and I would say that, that is it. One of the strengths that we had talked about last, uh, last time we monitored the policy was, uh, continuing to align curriculum with support uh, and teaching and learning around ELA, math, science, and social studies, and of course, we continue to work on that. And that's it, Mr. President.
Mr. President. One thing that I didn't, we had a lengthy discussion on this, um, the items that have been addressed are numerous and are noted within the operational inspection, expectation. Student engagement indicators are up. Each school has identified a behavioral management plan. Um, one note I didn't get in there, Diana, maybe, I don't know if you can help me on this. Work on the, I think, a thing that we discussed as a board, work on the, uh, critical care list or looking at those at-risk students, you know, as in the advisory, the work that within advisory and, you know, having that, that advisory you work with on a consistent, consistent basis has greatly improved our response to those situations. And maybe I can ask you a question, um. The last one.
Jasmine.
Jasmine, you're advisor that you, you're, you're with that person from a year-to-year basis and they develop, you know, a connection with you and work with you on where you are, and that's a relationship that all those students have within the high school, right?
Definitely. Um, Mr. Earl was my advisor, but sadly, he left last year. But, um, I know this year, he, Mr. Door Horse is, he's trying really hard to kind of just be involved with us and make sure that we're all okay and have someone to talk to.
Mm-hmm.
He is really trying, so.
And that, that, that means so much to have somebody looking at those people that, you know, have great issues or, you know, things of that nature. And that's, that's a, a real thing to celebrate with them, what's been done at the anti-attestant throughout the system. Board members, did I, did I miss anything in, in this summary here?
No.
Pat, I think you had a comment that, well, I think that was in the next one about me, that we are never, we're never surprised. That's in the next, next operational expectation, so. I wanna make sure I got your comments in there. Mr. Houston, did we?
No, this is pretty comprehensive, so. I think we've done a good job of camp, capturing everything that we looked at last year, recognizing where we've made, uh, great improvements.
Yep, and, you know, the admin team, you guys are particularly, uh, thank you for that and the work, I know you put in on that, it's done, it's been hard, so thank you. Okay, um, at this point, I need to find my paper. We did not notice, we did not own, note any exceptions. Um, we find ourselves in compliance with OE five. And I'd like to call for a motion that we accept OE five as presented.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much. Uh, OE nine communicating with the board. Terry, would you read the?
Annually, the board shall assure that they are fully and adequately informed about matters relating to board work and significant district concerns. A district's self-evaluation will be completed to include a table that outlines the current initiatives as well as documentation to support elements of OE nine communicating with the board.
Thank you. And if you'll go over the high points, please.
Sure. One of the questions asks about, uh, submitting required monitoring data in a thorough, accurate, accurate and understandable fashion according to the board's annual work plan schedule. Uh, so the district submits a hundred percent of the monitoring data per the board's annual work plan for all policies. This year, ten operating expectation reports have been submitted and approved, and each were noted as in compliance. To date, to date, the board has not found the district to be not in compliance on any operational expectations. It was, and you had a chance to see the, uh, exceptions. Uh, also provide the board in a timely manner and in simple and concise form, information about trends, facts, and other information. This is an area where the board and district administrator need continuing dialogue to determine whether a majority of the board members agree to have been provided information in a timely manner, and last Thursday, we had some conversations about that. And, um, the, the, the email updates that are sent out weekly from the district seem to be really keeping the board, um, in a loop. So I don't think there was any other suggestions that were made that we'd send you more updates. Uh, a third thing is informing the board of significant transfers of money within funds or other changes substantially affecting the district's financial condition. Uh, the seventeen eighteen annual audit of the district's finances revealed no instances in which a significant amount of money was transferred from one line item to another without having received prior approval from the board. And we did talk about, uh, last week, or, yeah, last week, uh, the board workshop that we held talking about our financial conditions that led up to the, uh, this year's audit. So we went into, we talked about that, uh, at length. The fourth thing is assure that the board has adequate information from a variety of viewpoints to assure informed board decisions. The district conducts multiple surveys throughout the year. After each survey, the administrative team reports to the board the general result, results of the survey and the next steps needed if appropriate. This is an area for continued dialogue, and I think we had some conversation last week about the board getting more information or having access to those, uh, the raw data within those surveys. Uh, it is the intent of the Board of Education to start linkage meetings with district stakeholders. And then five is inform the board of anticipated significant media coverage. It is the district administrator's intent to keep the board abreast of any news coverage regarding the district. And, and certainly, we've done that. Number six, inform the board, the board president, or individual members, if in the district administrator's opinion the board or individual board members have encroached into areas of responsibility assigned to the district administrator or if the board or its members are non-compliant. So we are in a third year of using policy governance. We continue with transition as board members and the district administrator practice policy governance with fidelity. As situations arise, the district administrator approaches board members when policy governance is in question. Uh, and that's something that we continue to have conversations around. And number seven, treat all members equally and assure that all members have equal access to information. Every board member receives the same verbal and written communications and documents that, uh, on matters that are a concern to the board as a whole and upon which the board makes decisions. So if a board member asks a question, typically, all the board members get the answer. All right, inform the board in a timely manner of any actual or anticipated non-compliance with any board operational expectations. So as the district works through operational, operating expectations, uh, in the third cycle, the board and district administrator continue to review the calendar and make changes as necessary. Any exceptions to the, uh, operational expectations policies are noted prior to board approval and will be addressed prior to next year's review cycle, and I think OE five really outlines the work that was done there. Uh, number nine, provide the board adequate information about all administrative actions and decisions that are delegated to the district administrator. Uh, all items that are required by law to be approved by the board are included on the boards, or the school board meeting agenda. Uh, this is an area where we continue to have dialogue. So we can determine whether a majority of the board members agree that adequate information regarding administrative actions and decisions are, uh, that are required to be approved by the board was provided, so that ongoing dialogue. And then inform the board in a timely manner of administrative disposition of complaints. Administrative disposition is interpreted as to how the complaint was handled or resolved. Complaint is defined as any concern or issue that falls under, under the board's legitimate purview and is presented to the district administrator by the board in writing. To date, no written complaints have been received by the Board of Education. Eleven, inform the board in advance of any deletions, uh, or significant changes to instructional programs. Significant modifications is defined as changes that require considerable professional development or resources to implement. The strategic plan is a work in progress and continues to be reviewed to match up with current strategic planning, feedback, survey data, and process data. And then inform the board in advance of any deletions of additions to or significant modification of a district policy. Any deletions, additions, or modifications to the policies in the governance policy model is approved by a hundred percent of the board. The NEOLA policies are now considered administrative guidelines and are updated as needed. And the last one, inform the board prior to requesting unusual types or amounts of legal services. The board is kept abreast on all districts' use of legal services. Nothing of unusual nature amounts was noted in seventeen eighteen.
Thank you very much, Terry. Um, that was, that was a mouthful. I think this is one of the, the, the strengths that we have as a district, um, is our ability to work as a team, um, through the school board, district administrator, administrator. to work as a team through the school board, district administrator, administrators and together, that we all respect the responsibilities that each and every one of us has. The strengths, weekly board updates, we as a board are kept abreast of current events and activities throughout the district. Haven't been surprised, but I think something that we brought up. The operational expectations provide the board with relevant information and monitoring data in conjunction with policy governance. And I did indicate an area of strength, that even though the audited budget last year resulted in expenses exceeding revenues, the board workshop was held to discuss these issues and ongoing review and communication of our financial condition was identified within this operational expectation and I do consider that a strength. And you know, it's to be, you know, the, the struggles that we have financially, it's, 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 it's nobody's fault. We have one of the best business managers in the state and we are, we are at the mercy of the system and you agree? There's not, we can't really pull it out of the tree, can we?
No.
No.
But we, we can control some things.
We can and I know we strive, we strive our best, but you know, I think, you know, as we move forward here, the strengths that we have in communicating the financial information as well as all district information is so critical for us as board members to be able to do our jobs effectively. And again, I don't think this would have happened without policy governance. With, I want to say rigor that it did, you know, I think it would have been more of a surprise and just reactionary rather than a, than a process-driven approach. And again, we had, I had a board member know more in the last two years that ended in the previous file, so the system's working, done. Thank you.
It's working well, yes.
Other strengths, gentlemen, did I miss any that, that we had discussed?
Well, one, one thing that I remember in the discussion was that we, Terry does a good job of determining what we need to know and what we don't need to know.
Right.
He, he, you know, he doesn't wait us down with minute things that, you know, I don't get an email, you know, every hour, this is going on, nobody, something that I need to know, he's on it and I'm, and I'm notified.
Very good.
I don't, I don't get blindsided by anything important.
Yep. I am updating that as, as we speak. And Diana, if you can only clean it off later, my type thing isn't that good. Okay, any discussion, further discussion? I'd like to make sure we get some voice. We find no exceptions to this policy, it is indeed a strength and I, I do, I celebrate. I'm one of the board members here at the table, the administrators and the administrator. Terry, thank you for your commitment to this. I'd like to call for a motion to approve OE nine. We have a motion, a second, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried, thank you very much. GP eight, just the one that I, that we did last month, Diana, that I didn't remember, or this one that we didn't do?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, good. We did talk.
There's, there's a lot of overlap, yeah, it feels like.
There's some overlap and then that's the language there got in there, so Terry, go for the.
Well, I'll read the statement, huh? The board commits itself and its members to ethical, lawful and profa- professional conduct, including proper use of authority and appropriate decorum. Board members then, and then what that means is board members will represent the interest of all owners of the entire district. Board members may not attempt to exercise individual authority over the school district except as explicitly set forth in board policies. Members shall maintain confidentiality appropriate to sensitive issues and information that otherwise may tend to compromise the integrity or legal standing of the board, particularly those matters discussed in closed session. That's GP eight.
Thank you, Terry. And I, and I want to, there were no noted exceptions to this policy and I want to note that that's very important, that, you know, if board members, there are, there are, there are horror stories out there about board members that would invade administrators' buildings and start giving direction to a middle school principal, Mr. Johnson, or, you know, you know, Mr. Black, and we just don't have that. At least Terry hasn't made me aware, you know, Terry hasn't made me aware of any situations in which that this, this ethical conduct by board members, that, you know, we need to honor that. And so I, I thank the board that we have and the strength I would note is just that the board members have done a good job of honoring this, this policy. Any other comments, gentlemen?
No, I mean, the board, every board member knows what our responsibility is, is the board makes it easy to be in compliance with this.
But everybody's to be commended to their level of compliance. I'll call for a motion to approve OE nine, excuse me, GP eight as presented.
I'll make a motion to let the board find itself in compliance with GP eight, board members' code of conduct.
We have a motion on the floor?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda? Is there anything that anybody wants to say about this? One point, I do, I do want to call out donations.
Sure.
Mr., Mr. Cody, would you be willing to do that?
Donations, Cliff Hudson donated many sport balls and baseball gloves for our recess equipment and a TV. Nikusa Lions Club, five hundred dollars towards keynote speaker for school year kickoff. Country year campground, eight hundred and two dollars for teacher supplies. Bruce Winters, four hundred dollars to pay for unpaid football and cross-country student fees. Soliris Partners in Education donated two thousand to be used towards ELA curriculum. And then backpack, backpack for kids, we have five fifty from Sacred Heart, two fifty-six awake from Bethlehem Lutheran Church and eighty dollars from the fifty-one H C E club.
Those are fantastic donations. Thank you very much for those donations, folks. They mean very much to our district and very much appreciated and thank you, Mr. President. With, if there are no other comments regarding the consent, consent agenda, I would like to call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
We have a motion, a second, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried, thank you. I should have said opposed. Motion carried, unanimous aye. Okay, future meetings, agenda items. Two thousand eighteen summer school report information, oh, that's our board workshop, October eleventh, and then regular board meeting, October sixteenth. One thing, gentlemen, this Board of Education guidelines, it's something that we haven't reviewed for some time, would it be okay to include that on the agenda for that Thursday night?
Yep.
And what my thoughts were is that, that we should possibly look at these guidelines and, you know, bring it in, bring it into alignment with policy governance and strategic plans. We also on here have our hopes and dreams and that's something that, you know, there might be some homework for that Thursday meeting. I don't know if we want to continue to use that, is that something you'd like to still have on there, gentlemen? Our hopes and dreams as a district or do we identify those within our operational expectations well enough?
Look, if I could just add some clarity around that, what we've had done in the past is the hopes and dreams we have for working together as a team, so Brian's would be, I hope we end that time.
But it's a place dream.
So it's those hopes and dreams we have, not for the district, but working collectively together. And that's the way that was, we can certainly change it, but when we did that and then we made those, we will statements, we'll be getting that done time, that kind of thing.
My hope and dream is that Chef Matt brings treats, no, I won't.
He brought treats, look at that.
I want to thank you, Chef Matt. Chef Matt provided each board member a, a thank you and we, we each get to go try a lunch at our, at our new, with our, with our lunch staff. And we just hope the very best for our, our lunch staff and our students there, so thank you, Chef Matt, very much and, ah, this is nice.
So, Mr. President, we finished with that? Or do you want to finish this out, but Mr. Black would like to go back to the consent agenda items, just to?
Just, just a, just a quick note on that is that we have a resignation of Steve Sutstein, AMS, long-term AMS custodian. And he is, again, due to health reasons and various reasons, he's able to step away, but Steve has, you know, served the district long and well over several years and I certainly appreciate the work he has put in and certainly the many people he's touched over those years. So want to just make sure that we acknowledge that work and appreciate it. I don't know how much was, I knew him initially as, I've been here for eleven years, he was at, he was at the high school where I went ahead and as, and then later he moved to AMS and so I've known him well over that. I can only speak for that slice of it, but he's certainly been here long term, so.
It was twenty-five plus.
Yeah, and I second to that as well from Mr. Black. When I was in high school, it was always nice seeing him walk around in the halls, just the smile and just.
He had, he had a, a cool sense of humor. Sometimes I didn't always get it, but he had a sense of humor. He'd always stump me once in a while, you know?
Thank you for, for taking that, Mr. Black, and let's give him a big round of applause. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
We took you off track now, we were talking about those hopes and dreams.
Well, are we good with the hopes and dreams? If, are those available on the web in case Cody hasn't got to see them?
I said, I gave everybody half.
Okay, very good, very good. Next month, we, with policy governance, we're, we have two items up. BSR four, delegation of authority to district administrator and then OE six, financial planning. So that, October's? Which meeting date do we move, Lynn?
Well, we had to keep it to the sixteenth because of the short-term borrowing has to be approved.
Okay. Are we gonna have to schedule another meeting later in the month or?
Well, I'll talk to you about that.
Okay, very good. I just want to make sure I'm not losing my mind.
No, we'll do the annual meeting on the sixteenth.
I'm capable of losing my mind.
So it's, it's normal next month?
Yes.
It's a normal schedule.
Well, it's not normal because we have our annual meeting at six and then.
But the normal dates.
So we're starting at six next month?
Yes.
Thank you, I, I need help. We, that's why we need to, Lynn, keep us on the straight now. Brian, am I keep talking too much?
Yep.
I can keep it going, go on, fine.
I'm ready for a motion.
Any other discussions, gentlemen? Ladies, I should say. Thank you for being here and I guess we'll have you for the next couple of months as well. Very good. Well, we do welcome and hopefully it's career or anything like that. And we do appreciate that, you know, they're just the calendar events, you know, so if we understand what's going on, you know, and, and, you know, for those members at home, public at home that might want to know the dates or, you know, important things about trade or different things like that, it's good stuff.
Just one thing to point out, I just looked on the calendar and maybe we should send out a calendar reminder for six o'clock for the annual meeting because it's not, it's not on here.
Terry?
Thank you, everybody.
Yep, thank you, everybody, for your time this evening. I'd like to call for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
A second.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?